Welcome everyone to this candidate pride webinar. Where we will be three green party candidates who have been elected multiple times in competitive races to city council positions. The webinar's objective is to inspire other green party candidates to run representing the party's 10 key values and four pillars. To win and serve their communities as elected officials. Candidate pride is sponsored by the coordinated campaign committee of the green party of the United States. Whose job is to partner with state parties to encourage, support and help promote green party candidates. My name is Scott Logan, I hail from Washington State. I'll be assisted today by Holly Hart from Iowa Gloria Matera from New York State and Starling Rankin also from Washington State. Following these quick introductory and housekeeping notes, I'll conduct separate interviews with our panelists, which will last in total for about forty five minutes. Following these interviews, Holly Hart will lead a ten minute presentation on using a SWAT analysis to guide campaign strategy. After Holly's presentation Gloria Matera will lead a fifteen minute Q and A session. Questions that you, the live viewing audience place in the chat during the webinar will be selected for the panel by Gloria and Starling. We'll conclude by ten thirty P M Eastern time with closing remarks by each of the panel members. Before launching the interviews, I'll note that audience members shall remain muted throughout the webinar. Please also keep your fam- your cameras, your video cameras turned off so that that saves some bandwidth for us. Please use the chat feature to submit questions to the panel and please identify yourself in the chat when you do so. Finally, the coordinated campaign committee and the Green Party of the United States rely on financial contributions from individuals. Who wish to see the party grow stronger. There's a donation link at the bottom of the webinars of this webinar's webpage and also at G P dot org. Thank you so much for your support. And now our panel, I'm so happy to welcome Tony Del Plato, Joyce Palmer Fortune and Cam Gordon. All three were open about their Green Party affiliation, even though their races when they ran were officially not nonpartisan. There was no party mentioned on the ballot. Most of the races they ran in were competitive, including the races that resulted in their first victories. They have all shared that running for office and serving in elected office have been very positive personal experiences for them. We and the coordinated campaign committee are especially proud of these candidates and the example that they set. And now let's meet them. I'll start with Tony Del Plato. Tony was elected village trustee in two thousand seventeen where he's serving currently. He's from Interlocken, New York. Tony, welcome. Can we get you started with a brief introduction to yourself so people know a little bit more more about you? Your background and the vent village of Interlocken. Oh, Tony, are you muted?
All right. Hi Scott. Yeah, thank you. Hello, everybody. Well, to start off, I moved in into Interlaken in two thousand and eight. And my partner and I remodeled a home built in eighteen fifty and turned into a small B and B. We have only three rooms and it supplements our income as well as I keep plying my trade. I've been a cook for almost fifty years. And I love cooking. It's one of my favorite things and we serve many of our guests with vegetables from the garden.
So if I can, if I can add, you you moved to Interlocken in in two thousand eight. So you were in the community and pretty active for about ten years before you were elected to village trustee. Is that right?
Yes, I think the the soon to be mayor knew me as a small business person, but also I I secured a grant from NYSERD or the New York State Energy and Research Agent Administration for New York State. That five thousand dollar grant gave me enough money to promote solar power. And and so upon doing that, word got out. Basically, word got out that I was doing that.
Right.
In roughly two thousand ten, I was involved with a group called We Are Seneca Lake. And it was a direct direct action group that blockaded that blockaded a salt mine in the southern end of Seneca Lake. And so I was arrested twice for the blockade and after about eight years, we successfully drove the corporation out of Interlaken and back to Texas where they so between
You were you were pretty active in some local affairs even before you were elected.
Yeah, yeah. It was I've always been active and and until I was asked to run for office. I basically saw myself as someone outside of the system challenging it and and so even in my ripe old age and the mid to late sixties. I thought, okay, here's here's something that I can do and I'll learn and and I did learn a lot.
So there's there's other issues I know that you you've mentioned already that you care very much about food and water, obviously. You're also very active in with indigenous rights in the Finger Lakes area of of New York State.
Yeah, I'm I work with
About that.
Yeah, I I work with the Cayuga Hono people, also known as the Cayuga. They are one of the six nations of the Hodnusoni, the Six Nations Iroquois Confederacy. And and I've worked with Mohawk communities, the Onondaga communities, and now the Cayuga Hono peoples. Essentially trying to educate and activate people to become involved in letting US government know that the treaties that were negotiated with these people are still active. My home is on unceded Cayuga Hono land. And that what has brought particular attention recently is the kind of silent, nonviolent coup by the current leader or recognized leader by the US government, Clint Half Town. He was a member of the Cayuga Hono leadership. And then at some point, he he began pretty much isolating and keeping out all of the traditional leaders as well as the families. Right now, the the biggest problem is that Half Town is attempting to evict those families he knows that don't support him. And he's committed incredible violent acts. I mean, I think it's not an overstatement to call him a fascist. He's used a construction company to destroy a longhouse which served as both a cultural center as well as a daycare center. Several of the businesses in that particular area. So so yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, is your your position on the as a village trustee? I imagine that must help you to amplify, educate and maybe even thwart some of these efforts that are counter to the interest of the indigenous community there.
Yeah, well, fortunately, I was able to convince the other four members of the Board of Trustees deciding a unanimous statement in support of the Cayuga Hono people. And that resolution was posted. And interestingly enough, I live in a very red county. And I mean, I mean, red, blood red and and the interesting thing is that the Board of Supervisors for the county. Only one Democrat and eleven Republicans, they all voted in favor of a statement supporting Sam George, Satchem Sam George, the traditional leader. And they were they pretty much reacted at least publicly to the violence that Half Town had committed. And continues to commit as he attempts to evict people. Fortunately, we have a lot of young people at Cornell and Niski College who have pretty much slept on the front yards and in the house assisting those people who were under threat. And so so that I think all of the attention and and my excuse me, my advocacy definitely brought some attention.
Great. So you mentioned earlier that you ran for office after you were active in the community for ten years. The mayor asked you to run. Your village is, I think, just about six hundred people. So that's your you it's the small town. Following following your victory. Did you you were openly green when you ran? Did anybody try to, you know, recruit you into their ranks and into another party?
Yes, the head of the County Democratic Party contacted me and asked me to run for town of covert supervisor, which would have put me into on the Board of Supervisors. There were several several things I said, but essentially I said that I couldn't become a Democrat. I've never been a Democrat and essentially don't support the Democratic Party line and of course, the history of what the Democratic and Republican Parties represent. I did, however, forge a an alliance with Democrats because we supported many of the same issues, women's rights, anti racism. They the Democratic Party hasn't made any clear stands with the Cayuga Hono people. Though many Democrats quietly say they support our efforts in defending those people. So so I rejected, I rejected the invitation. But also for personal reasons, I know how hard if one is to do a good job, how hard it is to be a town supervisor. And frankly, I didn't want to work that hard. I did. I don't said, I essentially don't believe. I don't believe in the political system as it exists. I'm participating in using it as a platform. And so you know, I I run a business. My family lives nearby. I like to write. I like to take naps between chapters of books that I'm reading. And so in a nutshell.
I wanna I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you for, you know, sticking green because that happens a lot. We have good candidates that run. And the Democrats usually as the Democrats will come along and try to, you know, pick people up and offer, oh, we can give you this much more, but they're part of the problem and you recognize that. And I want to thank you for holding holding true to that. One last thing while we wrap up this portion of the interview, what are your proudest accomplishments since you entered office?
Well, I can I can name at least two for sure. The first is within a few months of becoming a trustee. Our water tower and tank that was built in nineteen thirty seven sprung a leak. And so the mayor and I talked and neither one of us knew for sure exactly what to do. So I got on the phone and I called every county and state official and said, we've got a leak. We're losing five thousand gallons of water a day. We need to stop the leak and reconnect the telemetry system. So that the fire department and the DPW could monitor how much water is in the tank. Fortunately, we managed to rally Republican Senator Pam Helming, the town covert supervisor and the state of New York to give us some funds, which probably would have taken many months, but we got funds within a month. We had to hire a firm, a scoop that hired to put a scuba diver inside our two hundred fifty thousand gallon tank. And did the best he could to weld it. The second, I think, thing that I'm most proud of is getting a unanimous support for the resolution, supporting the Cayuga Hono people. Other than that, from month to month, I'm involved in a number of different projects right now. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, a meeting with a bunch of community members to establish a park for all ages. The old water tower site, which is about two acres, is 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 just a nice plot and there's no public space in Interlaken. And so I suggested we we create a park and we're waiting for a grant from New York forward, New York State. And we're still waiting, but in the meantime, we've decided to start some small project. We certainly can use four and a half million dollars to spruce up the village. But we're not going to wait. We're gonna do some fundraising, local businesses. And and hopefully this spring we can start working on our park.
Great. That's terrific, Tony. Thank you so much. And if anybody in the audience has questions for Tony, please send them in the chat. And during the Q and A, Tony will be with here for be here for the duration of the webinar for the Q and A. And of course, for the closing remarks. But Tony, I want to thank you very much for your service, for your participation. And we look forward to hearing more from you in the closing remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
And now next is Joyce Palmer Fortune. Joyce was first elected into the Select Board of Whately, Massachusetts in two thousand nine and is still serving. Joyce, can you also start with a brief introduction to let viewers know something about you and about the town of Whately? Welcome.
Oh, thank you, Scott. I'd be happy to. Let's see, first Whately, it's a small town. We've got about fifteen hundred residents. It's got about half of the town is like low, beautiful farmland. About half the town is kind of hilly wooded areas. We make a lot of maple syrup. We make a lot of potatoes. We have some really awesome farm stands in the summer. It's a it's just a really wonderful place. It's for those of you who might not be familiar with Western Massachusetts. We're not that far from the five colleges from UMass Amherst. I myself, I work at Smith College, which is down in Northampton, Massachusetts. So we're in this beautiful part of the country. At Smith College, I teach physics and by education, I'm an electrical engineer. And we moved to Whately back in nineteen ninety five. And I started getting involved. Well, not very long after we moved here, but I guess to let me see, you're you're asking me to talk about me and the town? Let's see. I may have told you enough about both. Let's move on to the good stuff.
We've we've but you were you moved to you were also living in the town and active for at least ten years before you
Correct.
For ran and served. Great. What are the issues that you care about, Joyce?
The issues that we cared about. Well, when we first moved here, we had two children, two small children, and they soon entered the schools. So we were very interested in maintaining our schools. They were good schools. But they always need the support of parents. Because, well, as as many of you know, every year our school budgets get reviewed. Our town budgets get reviewed and anything the state will spend gets reviewed, but we never review the tax cuts that we give to corporations. So in because our budget is constantly being reviewed every year and every line is scrutinized. You have to be there to let the public officials know that that this is important to you and that is your tax money as well. And this is what you want them to spend it on. And so that I I kind of got in to the, you know, how do I support my school by helping their budget supported? That's really the the first entree into that. I've always been interested in sustainability and renewable energy. And I sort of felt like when we first got here, I didn't really see enough of that.
Good. And so how did you decide to run for office?
Well, going to all the various meetings to try and help support our school. Realized that there were really three very, very important committees. The school committee, the select board and the finance committee. And this board and the finance committee were kind of full of all right, I'm sorry. I don't want anybody to feel bad, but it was full of old white men. And many of them very conservative white men who really were mostly interested in not spending any more money than they could possibly get away with spending. That was kind of where where we stood and I I didn't really feel like I I really thought it was a fight, I guess, to get them to understand my point of view. And to support the things I wanted them to support in our local budget process. So that's kind of when I decided to try and 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 there were a few other allies along with me who were also willing to run for those offices.
So the first time you ran for office, you did not win. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
But then you're the the second you you your victory was the second time you ran.
Correct, correct. That was the
Things, what were some of the things that happened to contribute to that win?
Oh, I think, well, running the first time actually did contribute to winning the second time. I think people actually had never considered voting for me for an office. They knew me through my school activism and from, you know, having our children in common at the school, but they got to know me in a little different way. One of the things I learned as I was trying to do all this is how little people know about what's going on in their local government and local groups that are having activities like the Grange and the Historical Society and the and the library. And there's all these these little centers of activity in town and nobody knew what anybody else was doing. So decided to start a sort of a shoestring newsletter. It was not a political newsletter. It was simply about what's going on and who's doing what and how you can get involved. And there's, you know, there's there's articles about how to get your dog licensed on a local level and and people really appreciated that newsletter. And it helped me also become really knowledgeable. So when people ask me questions, I could I could answer them.
How did you distribute the newsletter?
We use the US Mail.
Probably would not be done that way now, although maybe it would.
No, we will. Actually, people tell me today that they like, oh, don't stop printing it. They they really appreciate getting that. It's not a huge newsletter, but they really appreciate getting the paper copy and it gets taped to their refrigerator and
So you're still you're still publishing it.
We still publish that. It's twenty years now.
Okay. And what were what are what are your proudest accomplishments being a select board member at Whately?
Oh, okay. Well, I should probably say one one accomplishment just prior to office was that I helped lead a campaign for a tax override. So that we could fund our schools appropriately and our library appropriately. And that was sort of the springboard for getting the the winning election onto the onto the select board. I think you know, so much of it is just being in the room when the decision is made. So when people came before the town for small solar firms. I volunteered to be on the committee that negotiated the pilot agreement. So that those small solar farms have benefit both the town and the the people around it. That's I think, I I sort of got the reputation for, well, anything energy related will give it to Joyce. Which I was happy to do. And then it sort of became everything new that comes up that we're not quite sure about. Let's give that to Joyce. So I'm also the representative who negotiates host community agreements with marijuana retailers and growth facilities in our town. I think I just like so many times I've been able to advocate for renewable energy for say, for example, electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles when we're replacing municipal vehicles. And as those kind of vehicles become available. When you're in the room and they say, well, here's our new police cruiser that we want you to buy. And we said, well, do they have any electric options? Do they have any hybrid options? Could we look into the cost benefit of that? That wasn't always asked in the past and and I think being there and having allies who will ask those questions as well is really those are real accomplishments. It's kind of changing the the makeup of our our town and it's kind of sustainable. Sustainable footprint and it's affecting the bottom line money wise. Our finance committee is taking notice that we're saving money on all of these things.
Great. And regarding the the solar, I think for a lot of smaller towns, solar is an option to pursue, but there are some solar projects that are beneficial to the town and others, quite frankly, that that are not. Did you did you help your town go through that, you know, to figure out which kind of solar option would be most beneficial?
Hmm. Yes, yes. I think the you know, the town has power to do certain things and not others. You can't necessarily tell somebody you can't put up your solar farm, but you can require them to go through a planning process where they have to address the the concerns of the abutters. Which is I I would like to take credit for that, but that's actually Massachusetts law. That's one thing. And you can negotiate what they call a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes. Because the way the property tax laws work, they might you know, they might pay a little bit upfront, but then they wouldn't over time have to really pay very much in local taxes. So we recruit something where they actually pay a more constant amount over time. So that we have a steady stream of income coming from these these farms. We actually had to get consultants in to help us negotiate for these, but it the the cost of the consultant was very small compared to the benefit. So being there in the room to say it's worth hiring this consultant so that we can have a good agreement that this company will will keep and that will provide this revenue stream to the town. Don't get me started on how the state takes it, you know, takes care of things. Well, they they make sure that small towns only have a certain number of ways to create their own revenue. And this is one of them and we do it. And when that actually, here's another, I don't know if this is an accomplishment, but I feel like having been on the select board for a little while now and having knowledge of these things. My state senator called me when there was going to be a law that was gonna change how these pilot agreements could be negotiated. And I told him, I thought the law that they wrote was really bad and this is why. And it turns out he did not let that law go through and he was actually in a fairly powerful position at the time. So I don't know if it's really an accomplishment, but having been there and been stuck it out and done the hard work. People who do have more power than me in the state government actually listen to me. Do they always do what I say? No, not really. But I do feel like I am asked very often, what do I think they need to do? And sometimes I can see that what I have to say is actually affecting what they do.
It sounds like an accomplishment to me. Helping helping to keep a bad state law from taking effect. Getting a hybrid police vehicle instead of, I'm quite sure if you weren't there, they would have gotten probably another gas guzzler.
And that might that might be true. I do have allies though, so it it could be, you know, my allies are pushing for this as well.
Good, good. Well, Joyce, thank you very much for participating in this interview today, please. You're gonna stick around for Q and As later on.
Absolutely.
In this session, we're so proud of having office soldiers like you and Tony out there in the in the trenches, serving the communities. And we're going to now transition over to our third panelist. Cam Gordon was elected to Minneapolis. We're we're getting from small town to smallest town to smaller town to Minneapolis in this webinar. So well, Cam was elected to the Minneapolis City Council first in two thousand six. Was reelected multiple times and he served until two thousand twenty one. Welcome, Cam. Thank you for being with us today.
Delighted to be here.
Great. And so tell us how you decided to first run for office.
Well, I was involved in politics. I suppose I got interested in politics in the sixties. And so stayed interested and was part of various movements along the way. And but in nineteen ninety four, when the Greens were starting in Minnesota, I went and got involved and became a I went and got involved and became a founding member of the Green Party and also got on a. State steering committee and then was running the sort of electoral committee, trying to recruit candidates. And as I was going through that process, I started to realize that. That it's probably going to take some of us already in the group and already with the Greens to start running. And so that definitely motivated me. I also was very involved in my neighborhood and my community. And I was actually, we have neighborhood organizations in Minneapolis and I was president of my neighborhood organization. And got to really learn about how city government impacts people and about a lot about that. And I decided that I could really make a difference by running for city council in my community and also help. Bring those green values to really make a difference in the world.
Right. And you were recruiting other people to run for office, as I recall. Is that correct? You were out recruiting, trying to get other candidates to run.
Right, and that I as part of being on that electoral. Campaign and actually I told myself at the time that if the party can't run somebody by about nineteen ninety eight, I'm going to probably move on because. I thought getting people elected and inside the belly of the beast is the way we were going to be able to make change. And so probably got a little impatient and and decided that I would. Run myself as well. And actually, it it helped because after I ran the first time. More people got interested in running too, and we did get some more candidates.
Great, that's wonderful. So what were the important strategic decisions that you made during your winning campaign? The first time you ran for office, like. With of our three panelists, Tony won the first time, Joyce did not win the first time, won the second time. And you did not win the first time and you won the second time. Is that correct?
That's right. When I first ran for city council, I didn't win, I narrowly lost. I will say that at the time, there was an incumbent that was fairly entrenched and popular. And I even told my. Spouse at the time that maybe this will take us, may take me two tries. But I did a lot better than I expected and I almost won. I only lost by hundred and eight votes. But I also didn't really know what I was doing. So the second time when I was running, I I had a little bit more experience. And I think I really focused better on door knocking and one on one meeting the people. Now, the wards in in my city, the second ward, it has about thirty three thousand people. So there's four hundred and fifty thousand people in Minneapolis. A little bigger than those other cities. And so that's a lot of people to cover. And I was able the second time to prioritize. I had some good advice from people and they said, look at the voting record, look at where the turnout is. I think the first time I ran, I really thought I could get new voters. I focused a lot on the university of Minnesota area that's in the ward. And students to turn out new votes because I knew I'd probably need some newer voters who weren't entrenched Democrats in Minneapolis. Everybody votes Democrat. But the second time around. We developed these walking lists of where the voters turn out a lot. So I really recommend to people. Get the voter registration lists. You can see what elections they voted in. And so if you're running for city elections, see if they regularly vote in city elections in that part of the. The ward or wherever you are and concentrate there. So that's what I would do. I still. And some of my campaign. Managers and others didn't like this. I'd still knock on every door in these areas. But I went more often to the areas where I knew there were a lot of longtime regular voters. But we certainly went on campus, especially when fall came to turn off the voters there. But I think that made a big difference.
Great, great. And so how was your transition from being a candidate? To being an office holder? In the Minneapolis City Council?
Well, it's a big transition and I think a big challenge. I think it's really important when you make that transition, though, that you remember that you are still in the community and of the community. But it changes very much, at least it did in Minneapolis, because it's a full time position. You get an office. Everybody in City Hall calls you council member. It's it's a very aristocratic kind of feeling to be in government. Sometimes you're at a big dais in front of people when they come in to talk to you. And so keeping kind of. True to yourself is really important. So I didn't necessarily. Start putting on fancy suits and I didn't get a limo driver or anything like that. That was really important. But I also was the only green on this council with twelve Democrats. And one of the ways I think I was able to win when I was running as a green and I had it on all my literature and I had the four pillars on everything and talked about them all the time. At door to door, I would say, but I will represent you. I'll be your representative when I'm elected. And and I will be your voice in City Hall and I'll work with you to get things done. And that was one of my weaknesses that was identified. Oh, he'll be a, he's a green, he's just running to build that party. Or he's always going to be the opposition and he's just going to, you know, go after everybody. So I made a really big point early on. That's not the role I'm going to play. I'm going to listen carefully to staff and to my colleagues. And I actually set up a game plan where I wanted to partner with each one of my council member colleagues on an issue. Because there's enough issues going on. In government, you can always find something common with somebody. At least that's what I thought. Turned out there was one person didn't want to partner with me on anything. There was another. Maybe the most conservative that was willing to partner with something strengthening rental licenses to hold landlords accountable. But I ended up doing most of the work. But actually, it was for the rest of them, it was really a good opportunity for me to get to know those council members. The real trick becomes. Figuring out how other people make decisions, what it's based on. People don't always make decisions the same way you do. They may be more responsive to outside pressures at constituents. Maybe it's more about a personal relationship, a given take with you. You know, I entered it with, I've got values, priorities and principles, and I'm going to base all my decisions on that. Well, other people did that too, but not all of them. So that became a really good learning thing. And I'll just say that by the end of the first year. Myself and my policy aide, I guess it was mostly my doing, developed kind of a equation. It turned out to be more like a table. Of what are the variables that get us to success? Because we had some losses and we had some wins. And so I could look back and I could say, if I can get all of these ten elements lined up, I know it'll pass, but. So anyway, that was, it was it was fun and interesting and very engaging.
And what what are your proudest? When I asked you this question earlier about your proud accomplishment, my list and my notes is very long. So I want to make sure we have time for you to talk to the audience today about the proudest accomplishments that you've had in office.
Well, I appreciate that and I don't, you know, I I was in office for four terms, so that's sixteen years. So I had an opportunity to do a lot of work and a lot happened in the city of Minneapolis in those sixteen years. Some that maybe some of you have heard about, like the thirty five W bridge collapse. Or the police murder of George Floyd. I mean, those are some of the big things that kind of. One of them was in two thousand six after I got elected and one of them was in twenty twenty near the end of my time. So those are some bookends, but I. Maybe I'll mention four things. Early on. There and I had been part of a group called Fair Vote Minnesota before I was elected, a founding member of that. I was really pushing for proportional representation, but also the idea of instant runoff voting caught on. And Minneapolis passed instant runoff voting. And I got to head up the task force that was in charge of the implementation of that. And I was really proud that we were able to do that successfully and we pulled off successful elections. And lo and behold, our sibling city to the east, St. Paul, adopted ranked choice voting as well and other cities and now some states have followed. And so. That was a proud moment and an example of how you can take an idea of grassroots democracy and use it to guide your work in government. I also am very proud of the work that I was able to do on racial equity. Actually, back in two thousand five, when I was running my and I would talk about how we need more racial justice in our city. Our city is very segregated and there were issues you could see then. But a lot of people were also saying, you know, well, we're, you know, civil rights movement is over, we're on the other side of this mountain and and so she was saying, is that really a problem still? And it was, it was a glaring problem and I was able to. Still is a glaring problem. In fact, more people are aware of it now, which is good, I think. We have so much work left to do. But I was able to take the unemployment disparity in our city. Employment rates was a big deal for the mayor and others. And we wanted our unemployment rate to equal the suburban outstate unemployment rate, and it did. But when you looked at the numbers and I had some some friends and colleagues and others who were sharing numbers of, if you break it up by race, it's very different. And if you're Native American, indigenous or black in the city of Minneapolis, the unemployment rate is is is. Ten times higher and was then. And so by using that tool and getting some staff and. My colleagues here will know, when we take credit for stuff. We really didn't do any of it alone. In fact, some of this, it was mostly the community that polled and pushed us and and other times it was colleagues and staff and other people supporting us. So. We were, it was part of an effort, but now the city of Minneapolis, just to make this long story a little shorter. Has a office of racial equity and inclusion. There's staff that are supporting it. We, for a while, and I'm not sure if they're still doing it, we were requiring every council action that came before the city council. To have a racial equity impact analysis done before it was approved because. When I talk to the community, what they would always say is Minneapolis better not be telling me what I got to do to fix this problem till they fix it themselves. So we actually passed a resolution declaring institutional racism a problem in the city. I think that took till about twenty twelve. And I got thirteen council members to support that and that kind of kicked off all this other work that we're still trying to do. And I'm not sure how much time you have, but I we did some big work on sustainability that I'm very proud of. It actually resulted from a failure, mostly because I ran on wanting to municipalize. The electricity and the natural gas utilities in the city of Minneapolis, take it over as a government. Entity. Some cities do that. Mostly they did it because they had to when they were forming because no company wanted to work there. That failed. We didn't get enough signatures to get on the ballot. There's a big hoops the states put in front of us to do that. But it got attention of the utility companies and we started a clean energy partnership and they committed to help us implement our climate action plan, which was a big deal. And maybe I can leave it with those three and talk about.
Great. That's wonderful. So thank you, Cam. That's a lot of accomplishments, a lot of inspiration and please, you'll be with us for the duration. Of the webinar for the Q and A session and for closing remarks. So. Any questions that the audience members have to for either Tony or Joyce or Cam, once again, please. Submit them in the chat. And we will now move on. I'm going to introduce Holly Hart from the Coordinated Campaign Committee. Holly is going to give a presentation on SWOT analyses. Our target audience, our 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 main audience in conducting these webinars is for people who are. Running for office or considering to run. And setting a campaign strategy is one of the most important things that a campaign does when it. Embarks upon and especially embarks upon a competitive election. A SWOT analysis is an easy thing to do and Holly is going to talk about that right now. Holly?
Thank you. So. I'm going to talk about a SWOT analysis, which is means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And that's. An easy way. For or easy kind of a. Strategy for people to use to to create kind of a roadmap for what they wish to be. What they want to focus on. Before I share my screen, I do want to mention. My usual screed. Before we get to this, because one of the most important things you need to do to lay the groundwork. As Cam has just talked about, he's talking about a lot of strategizing and a lot of data and a lot of information collecting. One of the most important things you'll need to do is to know from your state government or county or municipal government. The election laws and most people and most candidates do that. But for a party and people who want to support that, it's very important to have people aware of that. There there's fifty different. Sets of state laws and they're they don't match up. So you really need to know. Where to go, Secretary of State or Board of Elections, you really need to have this information. And then. Most of, most people who become Greens or run for office have a reason to run. But you want to know. What the office you're seeking has to do with that reason. The office that you would hold, how would you influence or have an impact? What could you do to affect? The situation that you're wanting to address in your campaign. And that involves education such as learning your city budget, learning county budget, state laws. And there are many, many, many organizations and research organizations that you can go to. To find this, but but it's good to know. And then also, as Cam was mentioning, get that voter list, get the data, know where the voters may be found. Know who's the last voters, frequent voters. Independents. Frequent voters, frequent Democrats, many times is what we we had done. And make those calculations because that can make or break a campaign when you're really looking to get out of votes. The other thing I would say is Libertarian once said to me, well, you greens have it tough. You really have to know what you're talking about. And I said, well, what do you mean by that? And he said, well, libertarians can just spout the libertarian philosophy. But you have to actually know the issues. Which is a good thing. So and I think more and more people forget that, but people who run. Your voters, your constituents expect you to run for a reason and they want to vote for somebody who wants to win. Or have some kind of serious practical goal. Effect. Have an influence on the dialogue. And that's happened. Losing a losing candidate can still make an impact. By changing what is discussed during a campaign. Or ballot status or some other games. In my state, we had ballot status recently or not recently, but we had it briefly. But because of that, we were able to leverage that into some other benefits that we were. So that said. I'm going to now share my screen. Hopefully you can see this and. Let me know if that's showing up. Looks like it is. I'm going to try to move one moment. So a SWOT analysis stands for SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And some what what you want to do is just kind of calculate. You know, what what is in these categories and many times you have. Overlapping categories, but it's good to sit down and really think about some of these things. What can we do well? What do our constituents say we do well? Which is important, you know, our image is is an important thing to be aware of. Weaknesses, where can we improve? Opportunities. Do our competitors have weaknesses we could benefit from? Often, you know, ID often policy. Social, economic or political trends? Are there upcoming events we could benefit from? Are there potential new sources of funding? And threats? Do we have competitors? Do we have a popular incumbent? Is the perception of our party? And any third party, in fact, seen as even the psychological barrier to people voting for our candidates. Our constituency is shrinking or shifting? Are there political, social, economic trends working against us? Any scandals or negative public? Public relations or public public information? Now, I could go through. And. Just show if you want, maybe a few of the things that we got. We've had a candidate survey. And so this is not a scientific analysis. This is the first time out. So we don't necessarily have data to show how much of this stuff is is coming through consistently. But some of us who've been on the Coordinated Campaign Committee have heard have heard frequently. Some of some of these things. Some of the candidates talk about their fundraising, their turnout, their name recognition. Media, people who are good at using media and one person especially was able to use social media. As a means of outreach. I would just caution, don't expect to base your whole campaign on social media. People who have tried that found that that algorithm gets in the way big time. But you can use it as a as a messaging platform and of course, as a corollary to your own website. And other media presence. Notice noticing one thing very important. Someone says they built a base in the district over the past years. They were known, they'd run for office twice before. They've had a candidate in the role since twenty twelve and they kind of presence for twenty years. That makes a difference, especially if they're good, credible people. A large base who supported them early, they get out early and get out soon. I would also mention the platform, the green platform. Everybody likes it or they like some form of it and you can actually work across the political spectrum to some degree. With with people. I recently heard from a Republican. Who was going on and on about local, local transportation. And she came up with this idea to have. Energy efficient buses and bus routes that would serve the whole area. And make it affordable to people and my jaw dropped and I thought, you know, you were just spouting the green platform, but I won't say that because it might for the barrister. But. But you know, a lot of the stuff really appeals to people if you can get past that barrier. And sometimes a third party candidate is seen as a fruit loop, no matter what. Sometimes they're seen as somebody who's more neutral and so you can play on that. Strong message and platform. And then also the data and lists of donors, newsletter recipients. And one person said, my energy level, I do my homework. I'm both driven and friendly and seek information. Listen. Weaknesses, time management, using resources at their disposal. And oftentimes I would say campaigns just don't have enough. Especially the larger ones, you know, you need more people to be doing more, more. More tasks. If you're running for Soil and Water Commission, you're not going to necessarily need a campaign. more tasks. Uh, if you're running for Soil and Water Commission, you're not going to necessarily need a campaign manager and all kinds of other things. But if you're running for a larger office and then the city councils, you're going to have to have somebody taking on a lot of the, the nuts and bolts and logistics so that the view of the candidate can get out there and be meeting and greeting, greeting people. Popular incumbent, um, sometimes access to data, funding and fundraising is often, um, for the larger campaigns on issue. Some people saying life of green unity and that depends on your area. Uh, oftentimes as Cam mentioned, you know, he was seen as just running to grow the party. And people don't generally vote for that. Some people might, but generally, um, people vote for your issues. Signature requirements to get on the ballot, not such a problem with down ticket races, but if you're running for a higher office, especially at the state and federal level, that can be prohibitive. Easy to get ignored ballot design for, and that's another issue ballot design and depending on the state, uh, the way that your ballots are produced can disenfranchise, not disenfranchise, well, not entirely disenfranchised, but they can certainly disadvantage a small party. Let's see, opportunities. Uh, and this is great, especially for people with rural or smaller areas. There may be the only candidate not running or only candidate running, only candidate not raking in corporate money, which resonates with voters. Sometimes to be a first in the district, to educate voters about environmental concerns. Uh, especially in some rural areas on the red parts of the country now, there's no rep, there's no Republican or a single Democrat or, uh, there's no Democrat, but only a, a Republican. And so, um, uh, you know, some person said, who was the only, uh, no, no single Democrat, Republican or no single Democrat incumbent that had a reasonable path to win. College campuses often leverage media exposure and then, um, let's see, physician had only write in candidates and that's another, if you, if you run into that and if you run into an area like mine where you can use write-ins. We've had people run and win school board elections, mayors and such. So that's, don't, don't leave that out. Don't leave that option out if that's a possibility for you. Uh, one person was involvement with community and another thing I would also mention, oh, they also mentioned, um, being bilingual Spanish neighborhoods and some places also if you speak Chinese, Hmong or Lao or, uh, uh, Arabic or French, depending on where you're at can be, can be a huge, huge help. Even if you can write it, sometimes people will, uh, they'll appreciate that. But then also if you've had the opportunity to apply and serve on a board or commission, some of them appointed boards and commissions. And that gives you some real good, solid experience to know and learn more about how your city or how your jurisdiction works. And then finally threats, uh, they say the democratic establishment in some places where I live, nothing, they were sometimes were friendly, but not always. Republicans also see it as a threat. So yeah, you've got the major parties, you've got big money, uh, you've got big media. Fellow green candidates who are not serious. Now that's been another issue, not, I don't think horribly, but it, there's always in, in, uh, every cycle we see one or two who don't really have what you would call a green platform and they're out there and they get on the ballot and they can run. But, um, but you know, sometimes if you have political opponents, they can use those to make, try to make everybody look bad. Um, real credible media won't, they'll just ignore them. Uh, but, but you still, especially now with the proliferation of a lot of online media and podcasts and other, uh, platforms, that can be, that can be a threat. Uh, another possible writing candidate. Yeah, that's, that's another issue, but, um, so, uh, I don't know if there are any questions or, uh, Scott, if there was anything you'd hope to be covered by this. I do think as you're starting a campaign, just going through this and having people who are involved, kind of do this analysis. Sometimes you, you come up with something that you hadn't thought of before that could turn out to be a, uh, uh, help in your, um, in how you're going to strategize and plan, but that, that, that does not take the place of doing the groundwork of learning the issues, getting the data, doing the, the lot logistical strategizing and then, um, of course knowing the election laws in your jurisdiction. So is there any, is there anything else? We also, uh, there is a link I should say, and maybe Scott could put this in the chat. There's a link to the, um, to the survey results with charts and interesting stuff. And it's just interesting to see. And again, this is the first time out, so, um, you know, it's, it's not sure if there's going to be any trend, but as, as I've mentioned, uh, many of us have seen a lot of the similar things come up with fundraising. One other thing I would mention is, is technology. You have a lot of people who are fairly savvy about social media, but website help has been one of the most frequently heard, um, requests for help. Hopefully we can do something about that even at this level, but, um, uh, at the national level, not sure about that, but that's something that, that seems to be a, a common concern. And so one of the things I think you just have to realize is that you're going to have to find somebody who can do WordPress, Wix, GoDaddy, Sine, whatever, and, and make that part of your campaign from the start. Anything else, Scott, that you?
No, um, thank, thank you, Holly. I was just looking, um, for that report. And I, I, I think it's just in, it, it's in our Google Drive. We certainly do want to share that to anybody who is interested. So I would say if any of the viewing audience wants to see um, a copy of the twenty twenty-two candidate survey report, just send an email to us at CCC at GP dot org and we can get access. It's, um, it's a lot of good information and the SWOT information that Holly just shared uh, came from the responses of twenty twenty-two candidates to the question about SWOT. Um, and just to repeat, it's a, if you're starting a campaign, launching a campaign, it's a good idea to have a picture of these four boxes, what your strengths are, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So that you can plan to address either capitalize on your strengths or, or address, uh, the challenges in, in advance so that you anticipate them. Um, Holly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Is the screen, um, is the screen still shared? No? Okay.
No, I, I, I turned it off, so.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Um, we're now moving on to the Q and A portion. Um, Gloria, are you with us?
I am. Hi, everyone. This has been terrific.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, we have a few questions and I, I have one to, to start. I want to say first of all, uh, Tony's in my state, so we're proud of him. Uh, Joyce, you're amazing. I, I really know much about you and you know, Cam, I've always been a fangirl for a long time for you. So, uh, it's great to be in this. But, but Cam talked about this a little bit, um, when he spoke. But maybe if Joyce and then Tony talk a little bit about, you know, how did, how did they, what are the strategies they used in their campaign? You know, a lot of people will say you're either going to run a ground campaign or you're going to run a media kind of social media type of campaign. It's hard to do both, right? Um, like where did you concentrate your efforts? Uh, Cam talked a little about door to door in a rather large city, um, district, so. Maybe, uh, Joyce and then Tony, then we have a few more questions from the audience.
I, I would say in lately, it's definitely a ground campaign, um, where we're all spread out. I didn't actually do a lot of door knocking. Um, I did spend time at my local transfer station, which is for those of you who don't, you know, if you have a garbage truck, come pick up your trash. You won't know about transfer stations. But it's where we go to take our recyclables and pay for the non-recyclable trash that we throw. Um, and it's only open on Saturday mornings and Tuesday afternoons. So everybody's got to go there at some point on those two days. So it's a really great place to go and get to know people. Um, then it was really all a ground game of getting to know people. Big media here is our cable access television station, which I helped get founded. Um, so uh, that, but, but that's, that's all we have for big media. So we don't really have a media option around here.
Thanks. And Tony?
Yeah, my, mine was essentially a ground game. Um, I live in a small village of six hundred plus residents, uh, approximately three hundred registered voters and, uh, it was door to door. And, um, I enjoyed that a lot. Um, and I think there are people who even said to me, you know, I'm glad you're running. I may, I probably not going to vote for you, but you know, they, they pretty, but you know, I mean, especially when you identify yourself as a green or progressive in a fundamentally conservative community, you know, they're always a little suspicious. I mean, um, many people didn't know what it meant to be a member of the Green Party. You know, uh, if I were to say to them, well, hey, I'm, I'm an eco-socialist and I'm sure that would have blown them out of the water, um, or I would have blown myself out of the water frankly. So, um, so yeah, it was, it was a meet, meeting people in, in a variety of opportunities, uh, and, um, there were no, no large, large gatherings, churches didn't invite me. And I, it was, I guess, one, one last thing. I was involved as much as possible in the cultural life of my community. I organ, I organized a commemoration to Rod Serling, the creator of the Twilight Zone, who is buried in, in Tulak and his family still lives in the village. Uh, or I'm sorry, they have a cottage in the village. They live in Ithaca, New York. So, uh, being involved in a, in, in cultural events, I volunteered to cook for fundraiser uh, at one of the churches and, um, and so, you know, how to integrate yourself into the, into a, especially a small community is, uh, is a plus.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Cam, did you want to add to anything? Um, and you talked quite a bit about how you did walk lists. It's really important for candidates to know that, but give you a minute if you wanted more to say. Or we can, actually don't see Cam, but my whole screen is not open. So I'll go Margaret Elizabeth, uh, one of the, um, uh, co-chairs of the Green Party of the United States, uh, had a question. She wants to know on average, how large were your campaign staffs, uh, for each of the candidates? And then which position in the campaign staff did, uh, each of you feel, uh, made the largest difference in terms of your success? Who would like to answer that one first? We have Tony.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joyce.
I said, my, my answer would be fairly short. Campaigns for running for office, I never had more staff than just the friends who are willing to put up signs and talk to their friends. Um, and, uh, because those campaigns were never very big, they didn't need to be big to win. Uh, in most cases, the campaign that did need a lot of work was the override campaign. And there we had a group of about twelve people. We had two people who were kind of functioning as co-leaders. I was one of those. Um, and, and there it was really just, we talked to each other every other day and uh, we can make our list of people we need to contact and keeping track of things. We had our voter list and so on. Um, but those are, um, the, it was not, did not have a structure of a campaign manager, but there were, the fact that we had two leaders who were both sharing that burden was really important.
Great. Thanks, Joyce. Uh, Cam, I don't know if you heard this next question, so I can read it for you again, which is on average, how large are the campaign staff that you had and which position in the campaign staff did you feel made the largest difference, uh, for success?
Yeah, I tended to have smaller campaign staffs, uh, and it was, they were usually volunteers actually. Um, I think what I always recommend is the first person people should get is a treasurer. And the treasurer is one that has to file the state reports. And also the treasurer keeps track of the money and their job is just to make sure that it's squeaky clean. And then you don't have to be worried about depositing any checks or those kinds of things. So that's really important. Um, I also think it's, um, getting some advisors, uh, a campaign manager is very important, but if you can't get somebody willing to be called that, you can get somebody who's willing to help. Um, I, I had, um, somebody who was kind of my, uh, canvas coordinator, who really was more of a campaign manager for a while. Volunteer coordinator can be very important too, as you get volunteers. Um, but I think probably that volunteer coordinator and the treasurer are the most important. And some people run for office in Minneapolis and spend tens of thousands of dollars and I didn't. And maybe, um, I should have hired more folks to help me. Um, as it, there got to be more to do with social media and Facebook and those kinds of things. It also helps to have somebody who can be managing that too.
Great. Thanks. Uh, and Tony, do you want to comment on that question?
Yeah, I, I had a campaign manager, it was a friend, a longtime friend of mine and, uh, she volunteered and, um, and so it was great. My, um, my finances for the campaign came to seventy-five dollars for yard signs. So as you can imagine, um, it was all, it was pretty low key, especially since no social media. Um, the regional newspaper, the Finger Lakes Times, didn't run editorials or promotions by candidates who were running for office. Though others could write saying, I support, I support you and, uh, and that kind of thing. So, um, yeah, it was, uh, I think the biggest weakness was the fact that there were seven Greens in the village, sixty in the county. And I was not able to interest them in, um, either in my campaign or in Howie Hawkins' campaign for Governor of New York. So, um, a lot of people are green. They aspire to be green, but don't participate. And that's, that, that's a real weakness, I think.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, maybe since you mentioned it, we'll, you know, start this, this next question, uh, from Sherri Wells wants to know anything any of the candidates can say about fundraising. So, you know, how much did you raise? How did you raise it? Um, how did you reach out? Who were your donors? Um, anything like that you want to can, uh, share with everyone? I think Tony, you already mentioned about your signs, but please, if there's anything else you'd like to say, start with you.
Nope, nothing else. Um, you know, I was part of a slate. Um, the guy who ran for mayor, who's on the council, uh, the Board of Trustees already. And, um, and the other candidate was raising his family. So we, um, we pretty much just reached out through all of their connections and whatever notoriety I built up, uh, in my life in Interlake and, uh, brought me a positive response, uh, to my two campaigns.
Great. Uh, Joyce, what about, uh, fundraising? What, what do you have to share with others about what?
Maybe more or less like Tony, I think in one campaign we bought materials to make signs. So it was never a particularly onerous thing for me.
Cam, much bigger race, um, how did, how did that go for you?
Fundraising is, uh, really important. I think I always, um, was outspent. Um, it, except maybe some of those races where I didn't have much competition once I got elected. But, um, uh, maybe in, in two thousand and five, we spent fourteen thousand dollars. Never spent more than twenty, I don't think. Um, and some people here are spending thirty and fifty and I, it could even get higher, especially if they're buying a lot of ads on social media. We spent, um, I do think it depends on, I guess, the size of your race and who you have to reach. But fundraising is really important. It's also something that's really hard, uh, for a lot of people. At least it was hard for me to be asking for money. We have limits on what you can raise and I also, um, never took money from political action committees. Um, I, I had some strict rules on myself. I also didn't take money from anybody who had any business before the city in the last six months or looked like they would. So even if it was a liquor store owner who was going to get their liquor license renewed or some you know, a lot of big time developers. In fact, I remember returning, um, thousand dollar checks from the Polad family who owned a lot of property and they own the baseball team here. So then they just donate, especially if they think you're going to win, they just donate to all the candidates. But I recommend, because of those limits every year, decide early enough so you can raise money the year ahead of time. Go ahead and reach out to friends and family first. Take whatever you can. We did some targeted mailings early on, um, even with return envelopes. Um, and, and it helps to say what you need the money for. We spent most of our money on campaign literature because we did bring it door to door with us. We also dropped off literature sometimes and, um, I also bought some ads in the neighborhood newspapers. And so, um, also did house parties. Now the house parties weren't always necessarily to get money. But I would find it was also to spread the word, an excuse to door knock in that area. You find a friend or somebody who you work with or somebody willing to support you, who says, sure, you can have a house party or a yard party at my place. And then you, um, look for those sprinkled throughout your district. And when you get there, um, people, well, before you invite people, um, you hope the host is too, but you're also door knocking the area and say, hey, your neighborhood supports me and, and, and you're invited to come over and we can talk more, which is a great, um, way to get those people who want to talk a lot of chance to do so. And then, um, when you're there, um, ask for contributions or get somebody who's really good at it and likes to do it, because sometimes it actually isn't the best thing for the candidate to be asking for the money. So a lot of times what we called in the campaign, the money pitch, would come from somebody else. A lot of times if they were hosting, the hosts would be willing to do that money pitch and could just tell why they thought it. A lot of times if they were hosting, the host would be willing to do that money pitch and could just tell why they thought it was important. And then the candidate doesn't have to, um, and the candidate doesn't have to be handling money or groveling for money or all of those kinds of things, um, because then it just goes to the treasurer.
Great, thank you. Those are um, all great strategies that candidates can employ. As a, as a former candidate, several times I did a number of those. I didn't win. So, uh, my election, um, no, two hundred thousand people in the Brooklyn District did not come to vote for me, but um, so I have a couple of questions.
Um. Gloria, can I, can I call time?
Oh yeah, sure. I, people had a question for Cam and a question for J, uh, Joyce, but.
But I think what we can do with the questions perhaps is to, you know, retain them. And make sure we have emails of the people who are asking questions and we can follow up with the candidates and respond um, privately to the, to the people asking them. Uh, if, if that's okay.
That's fine. And in fact, uh, either Cam and, and Joyce can also look in the chat if they can see it and uh, in their closing remarks, they may want to address that specific question themselves.
And that's what we're moving on to right now, the, the closing remarks and the words of wisdom. And I don't think we pulled any slots for who was going to go first, second and third. So, but we know each other all pretty well now. So maybe I can just, uh, maybe we should go in. Um. No, let's not go in reverse order from today. Let's be so random. Let's start with Joyce uh, to do closing remarks and words of wisdom and then Tony and then Cam. Uh, Joyce, uh, closing remarks?
Oh, well, I, I'll keep it short because I think it can be really simple. I think the um, the best advice is to start small, start local. Um, it might, like I started with the PTO and. Um, that it, you. It, it's okay to be starting low and, and not trying to become a state senator or president or, or. Something really, really big and, and, and high profile. Um, because. The thing I learned the most was that being in the room matters. I mean, it mattered to our principal and teachers that I was in the room at the PTO. It matters. Uh, to people that we stood up and uh, and, and fought for a tax override. So that our school and library could maintain their funding. It mattered to a, a lot of people that we. That you, that you do what you do. So I, I just say, don't doubt that. Um, that local decisions are not important. Local decisions are really important. Doesn't matter how much money the federal government sets aside for electric vehicles if municipalities won't buy them.
Right.
So being in the room where these decisions are made and being able to offer the alternative when others may not think of it. Is, can be really powerful. And I've found that to be the case. So he, it, I'm, I'm on, I would say a lowly select board in a small town. Making a difference for that community and it's an example though to other communities. And it, it, it spreads, it can spread from low levels. So don't feel like you have to go in for statewide office necessarily. Go for a law, you don't have to go for an elected office. All kinds of boards in towns are looking for people to volunteer. To help with one thing or another. The library needs volunteers, the conservation commission needs volunteers, all kinds of local boards. Would love to have volunteers and that's how you start getting to know people, get to know where the, the power centers are, so to speak, and, and the ones that are related to what you're interested in.
Um, that's. Yeah, we've already, we've already, thank you Joyce. We've already seen how you're, you as a select board member at Wheatley. You have, um, I mean, I hate to use the word access because that usually involves paid and things like that. But you have access to state senators and people in higher office and you are influencing their decisions by virtue of, of you being a local. Elected office holder. Um.
Yeah, they get a certain amount of cred for, for what you've done and your, your opinion gets listened to differently. Yeah, I agree with.
Misconception we fight in the Green Party that we only run local, we, we only run presidential and congressional offices, which of course isn't true. Most of our candidates by far. Are at the local level and Mike Feinstein has done reports with the elections database to show that thirty-five percent of local candidates win. Um, so we have, you know, we have some, you know, the information that our opponents spread, we need to refute that and show that and your examples of doing that, but you do have access. Uh, Tony has access through uh, the um, his advocacy for indigenous groups to. Address things that the, uh, address missteps by the federal government and has a platform for doing that in, in, that is amplified by his being a village trustee. So want to thank you very, oh, um. Yeah, I made the point about thirty-five percent of local candidates, uh, local Green Party candidates win. So. We'll leave it at that and move on to um, Tony, your words of wisdom for the aspiring candidates who are in the viewing audience today. Or who will be watching the recording of this.
I think being in the political game, whether it's for office or not, um, is important. And for me, um, running for office uh. Taught me a lot of lessons. I want to second much of what Joyce said. Um. You know, you want to be at the table, you want to be, you want to be where um. People will listen to you, whether they agree with you or not. Um, and I have to say that um. When I ran for office the second time, a couple of Republicans who I ran against in a previous election. Came up to me and said, you know, Tony, you're doing a good job. I'm not going to run again. So I thought, okay, that's cool. I appreciated that. And I have to say. It wa, there weren't many Republicans with whom I had any rapport with. There were some. The, the guys we beat, well, the guys we beat uh, out were, were, were really terrible, terrible human beings. I'm sorry to have to judge them so harshly. Uh, but they got, they got run out because of who they were. And so um. Yeah, put, put your values out there, put your time in and uh, for as long as you're around and um. You know, um, you have the access, you have the platform, um, you have an opportunity to use it.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Tony. Um, Cam, your words of wisdom, final thoughts?
Well, I just want to say that running for office was one of the uh, biggest learning experiences of my life. I think uh, if you are inclined to want to try to do so, that you should. Um, I think. Also, running with the green values front and center on that um, is, is worth it. I think they resonate with a lot of people. Uh, and also even if you don't win, you've at least pushed some values and got people thinking about things. A couple of words of advice before you run though, that I would like people to think about. And I liked what Joyce was saying about starting small. The first thing I actually did in my neighborhood with a community thing was I became. President of the Parks Parent Advisory Group, who worked on recruiting coaches and having sports teams, because I had a little leaguer. So it was a very small thing, but I got to know some community members. I got to get a feeling for working in a group and having a little bit of leadership there. Um, and that is really important. And I mentioned earlier, I was on my neighborhood group board. So I expanded that and kind of built on that. And that gives you a chance and an opportunity to see if you really care for the community, if you really um. Feel uh, empathy for your neighbors. If you don't love the people you're going to represent, and maybe love is a big word here, but I mean it in, in a big way, I guess. Um. Don't run for office to represent them. If you find uh, all the meetings irritating and you can't get anywhere with it, maybe it's not for you. But if you do care for the people and you do want to make a difference, it's fantastic. And I will also say, even if you aren't successful the first time, Gloria. Um, or anyone else, you can be the second time because look at me and Joyce. Um, it took us a couple of tries. And remember that when you're doing it too. You want to, I guess, take the high road, leave a good impression, do your best, be your best. So that um, you can keep making a difference even after the election is over. There was a question. I'll just say, I'm not on the council right now. The question was about police reform. I was part of an effort that wanted to dismantle the Minneapolis Police Department. We had a charter proposal to do so and create a new department of public safety that would be holistic and based on a health model. And we lost that charter amendment um, this, at the same year that there was a big swing to the right. So now I'm still fighting that fight. Um, and how to break that um. Uh, culture wide open and build something new.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Cam. And um, this will conclude tonight's Candidate Pride webinar. Uh, the Coordinated Campaign Committee, we produce these webinars on a monthly basis on various topics. Next month, we will be offering a campaign one O one webinar to offer campaign basics to interested candidates. These are typically either the second or the fourth Tuesday of the month. Tonight was an exception because the second Tuesday would have been Valentine's Day and we didn't want to compete with that. Uh, but usually it's the second and the fourth, or the fourth Tuesday of the month. We also run. Green Wave series, which feature promising candidates while they are actively campaigning. And please again, consider supporting this committee or becoming a monthly sustainer to the Green Party of the U.S. As well as making financial contributions direct to the candidates that you support. Uh, none of us takes corporate or lobbyist funds, so support from individuals like you who share our values is essential. Uh, thank you so much and we look forward to seeing you at a future webinar.